Call to order, the St. Joseph City Council of May 2nd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance will signify the United States of America, which is a good republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item two. We're gonna swear in our newest police officer. Nathan from front and center. Nathan, I'm a little slow. I have to appreciate all the time we're doing. Can you read him if he'd have to me? Hi, Nathan Bosson.
Hi, Nathan Bosson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of Minnesota.
And to discharge basically the duties of.
And to discharge the.
Faithfully the duties.
Faithfully.
The duties.
The duties of.
I'm gonna go slower. Okay. The position of police officer for St. Joseph.
The position of police officer for St. Joseph, Minnesota.
I will well and truly serve.
I will well and truly serve.
This is easier, isn't it? Our sovereign country and state.
Our sovereign country and state.
Without favor or affection.
Without favor or affection.
Malice or ill will.
Malice or ill will.
Until I am legally discharged.
Until I am legally discharged.
I will see and cause our community's peace.
I will see and cause our community's peace.
To be kept and persevered.
To be kept and persevered.
Preserved. I always get that one wrong.
Preserve.
I will prevent to the best of my ability.
I will prevent to the best of my ability.
All offenses against the peace.
All offenses against the peace.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yeah, we both struggle at that. Congratulations. These glasses don't work. Does it matter which copy?
No.
Okay, that's your copy. Good luck.
Thanks, Nathan.
See, that, they should get their own copy. I know. Item three, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step forward to the podium. Name, address. These are about items that are not on the agenda.
Hello, my name is Tim Borsh, live at 11 Thirteenth Avenue Northwest. I guess I have to kind of come back in here, um, trying to deal with everybody on the service that I rented on, on. I'm going back to the road, the alley way between Second and Third Avenue. There's a baseball game going on right now. You can see the disaster that's there right now. Um, I think me and Randy had a little, had a meeting, uh, last Friday. And not so much that that was his part of the deal, but, um, I've also been talking with Jerry. We've spent all this money on planting grass and, and trying to get the, where the tar was put down new, to get all the other grass to grow on the edges. Cars are parking in the same spots they were before. It was one of the first things I'd bring to the attention was that we should have had curb and gutter there. And the re, and I know it's an expense, very much so, but we're sitting here with, now we got grass that we just planted and there's, it's ruined. So now we're spending more money. The city is, us people are, the city of St. Joseph's, spending more money to get it done again, and then it's gonna run over it again. So I don't know what the answer is, but I, I kind of wish that people would listen a little bit closer, or at least go and look at it. Look at the, if they're still playing ball after this game is over, or after this is over, go look over there. There's, there's cars parked on the tar right now. So, which is, I know it's part of Dwight, and I wanna kind of get him to maybe get on board more with, with, uh, tickets. You know, something, something's gotta stop somewhere. I think somebody's talked to Ryan about maybe possibly putting up, um, no parking on that side too. I feel bad for the, the ballplayers. They need a place to park. I tried to push that back, uh, four or five years ago when we were doing Park Terrace over, whenever that was, to make more parking up on the top there. There's no parking for them to go except around down the basement and they're gonna, or down in the ballpark, and they're gonna get hit by balls, and that's why they're parking up on top of the hill. We should try to find a remedy to this, instead of just trying to make it over and over again, the same thing over and over again. Um, and in the same fact where they, there was a curb and gutter, or a curb anyway, where, uh, I call it the old wolf house, but there's, but across from the barber shop. Um, now they're using that for parking spot also, which is parking on grass, which I was always told that you can't park on grass with a motor vehicle. Um, so I'm, I'm asking the city, plus the fact that that road has not been tarred between Second and Third. Um, I think still that this is the best time to do it, when you have all the machinery coming back, to do that road. If you look at it now, there's, I guess I still haven't talked with Ryan, but I, I would say it's, it's gonna pay for itself to tar it now. Then for all the maintenance that Ryan and his crew is gonna have to do to try to maintain it. All that dirt is now because it's veed in the center, uh, of that alley. All that dirt runs straight to the manhole, which is a waterway, which is gonna be plugged up, which they're gonna have to clean out and do. So somebody needs to look at this closer. I did talk to Randy about it. I think he kind of agrees with me on it. I know Ryan agrees with me on it. And I know the maintenance workers do too. Um, I think we're this far with it that it's tarred. I think at least that portion would be maintenance free. And watching it through the winter, just with the people using the ballpark for snow, um, that alleyway was definitely needed to stay open. It works well for the community. And I just want, I just like everybody to kind of look at that more. The guys, if there's not a ballgame tonight, and you don't have a chance to look at it tonight, check out the next time they have a ballgame there, and go look down there. People have to see it in person to understand what I'm talking about. It's, it's bad. So, um, they're parking in the, in the alleyways, uh, to the west, towards Smiles. There's, there's literally parking where you can't get through, because there's, you know, they're just taking it up wherever they can do. So I'd appreciate if you guys could look at that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Very good. Item three, item four, approval of the agenda.
I would like to, Mayor and Council, to, uh, ask for an amendment to the agenda. Tropex tax abatement request. Depending on where you would not want to add, that you could potentially add it after number 10, after the engineer reports. And then just push everything else down.
Number one, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Now you wanna make a, a change to, let's add it at, let's do 10A. Tax abatement. Uh, motion and second to approve the agenda, addition of 10A tax abatement information. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Nay.
Sorry, opposed, nay. Very good. Motion prevails, 4-1. My bad, Kev. Item five, consent agenda.
I'll move. Second.
Motion and second on consent agenda. Any questions or concerns? Anything wanting to be pulled? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, public hearing, special events, Joe Town.
Yes, so before you this evening is a request that was submitted by the Church of St. Joseph for Joe Town Rocks. The event will be held on July 3rd and 4th, and will include an outdoor concert, fireworks, street closures. Um, in your packet, the applicant has also submitted plans for emergency evacuation, parking and traffic control, event cleanup, security, crowd control. In addition to, um, law enforcement from the city of St. Joseph and Stearns County. Applicant is also contracted with security specialists. Hearing notices for this hearing were sent to property orders within 350 feet, and the applicants are present this evening to go over, um, the changes that have been implemented from previous years, and then to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Amber Walling. I serve as the business administrator.
You, you don't mind if I open the public hearing first, do you?
Oh, sure.
Okay. That being said, as I read in, we're gonna open the public hearing now. Bingo. Name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Amber Walling. I, uh, live at 31 Second Avenue Northeast, but, uh, work as the business administrator at the Church of St. Joseph at 12 West Minnesota Street in St. Joseph. Um, I'm serving as a representative of the parish tonight. Uh, we also have other representatives here, our co-chairs, Dean Buddy and Bruce Becktoold, as well as parish trustee, and, uh, a longtime volunteer of the festival. Um, we're aware, you're aware that we're submitting permitting for our event that's hosted on the 3rd and 4th. We wanted to just bring to your attention that we're celebrating our 15th Joe Town Rocks concert. Uh, thanks to Bobby Vee and the parish collaboration with the Beline family over the last, which will be 17 years with the gap, the two-year gap in concerts. Um, as our hope always to provide a safe and family-friendly concert, and a festival that celebrates both our parish and the St. Joseph community. Uh, based on the feedback that we received in 2019 from the council, as well as parishioners and community members, we have, uh, made some following, or the following changes in 2022. The live music will complete prior to the fireworks, which will occur at 10:15. Uh, in recent years, the live music has continued until midnight. Um, we have received some feedback regarding the, the, the type of population that sticks around after the fireworks in terms of family friendliness, and so we made that adjustment. Uh, all food and beverage stands will discontinue service at 11:00 PM. And this year we have invited, and they have accepted our invitation, Resurrection Lutheran Church, to lead our refreshment stand. And we have established an agreement with them to allow them to receive the majority of the proceeds from this particular stand. Our hope in the changes made will allow community businesses to further benefit from the influx of visitors to the community. Uh, we hope that they will, um, seek greater business, uh, after that 11 o'clock hour in some of the local establishments. And then also based on the feedback that we received from Resurrection Lutheran Church this year, we hope to expand our partnerships with additional nonprofit organizations in the future, so that there's some additional community nonprofit benefits coming from the influx of, uh, visitors to our community. We appreciate your consideration for the permit approval, and we are open to questions that you may have.
Thank you. Let's, if anybody else wants to speak, and then we'll kind of open it up to councilors and ask more questions. Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak? Joe Town Rocks, public hearing. Seeing no one else come forward, we will close the public hearing and then open it to councilors. And here's where you may get some questions. What, councilors, anything on the, uh?
Um, no parade.
Yeah, I'm gonna make you come back, sorry about that.
Sorry.
I should have made you sit there, I'm sorry. My bad.
I don't want to be in anybody's way if there's someone to speak. Uh, the parade is not associated with the church. The, the parade has always been hosted by the Lions Club. And so the, the parade permit does not come from us. It's my understanding they will have the parade, but I, we are not involved in that planning at all.
We're all ready for it. We're on board.
I have a question. I see in here you were, you made a meeting request or whatever by the church to, with police chief, and then city administrator, no meeting date was received. Did you have a chance to meet Dwight? Do you have any concerns with how the event has gone in the past, issues that have been brought in up?
Nope, everything looks like it's on, on task like it has in the past. I, I mean, shortening it up by an hour is definitely gonna be better for my staff and for people that have complained in the past. I think it's a step in the right direction, so I have none.
I have two questions. Number one, is fireworks in the same place?
Yes, the fireworks setup will be, uh, behind the All Saints, Little Saints, Little Saints.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, you, you added something new about weather restrictions or weather communication? That's something new, right?
Yeah, uh, last year, or in 2019, uh, we had been asked to provide an emergency preparedness plan. So the emergency preparedness plan was supplied in 2019. Uh, it is the same.
Okay.
As it was then, uh, but we work with, I'm not sure, someone in, in Stearns County Weather, her name is in the permitting, I apologize, um, that provides us kind of to the minute updates.
No, no, that's fine. This is, I do want to make sure our bases are covered, that's all.
Yeah.
Very good. Other council questions? Okay. I'll entertain a.
I will.
Anyone?
I would like to move, uh, to approve this special event request submitted by the Church of St. Joseph for this, um, Joe Town Rocks for July 3rd and 4th of 2022.
I'll second.
Motion and second, approving the special event request by the Church of St. Joseph, July 3rd and 4th. Any other questions or concern? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Thank you very much. Sorry. Sal's Bar, item seven, special event, another special event. We're not, is this a public hearing? It's not, is it?
Not a public hearing, it's just up for discussion and direction.
Okay.
Um, so we have received two applications from Sal's Bar for events to be held in June and July of this year. Um, both events are proposed to go past the 9:30 timeframe, which is, uh, against city ordinance 701. Um, 701 allows for each establishment to have one event past 9:30 per year. Um, the applicant is asking that both events be allowed, um, because they were limited in the past due to COVID. And so at this time, I guess staff is just looking for direction on how the council would like to proceed with processing those applications.
Counselors?
I would like to see, um, since gravitating towards the event that just came up, in that 10 o'clock-ish range for music. Because we do have to really look at the sound, um, downtown. And so something to gravitate or to feel comfortable in that arena to not going to 12 o'clock midnight.
Go ahead.
Uh, Kyle Schneider with Sal's. Um, we had originally put on there at 12, and then we cut it back to 10:30 with the music stopping.
For both events?
Yes.
Okay.
And the events, the events of the past have been no problem compared to the LA Jam or just some normal, uh, college parties. You know, the noise, their noise levels are very good. I live a block away, two blocks away, and you don't even hear it. I don't even know what's happening. You know, compared to the other events and the college parties. So I got no problem with it at all. You know, they've been very good in the past, and I expect that to, you know, continue.
Kevin, so Mr. Schneider, is this like a one-off this year? You're asking for two?
Yeah. Because we missed one. It's, it's collaboration with colleges, and it coincides with their reunion years. And so the first one will be the reunion years of two, graduating classes of two and sevens.
And what month is that?
June, June 2015.
And the second is when?
July 9.
Okay. And you haven't submitted, he has submitted an application?
He has submitted applications for both, but ordinance only allows for one past 9:30.
Giving you direction, you're gonna come back to the next council meeting with?
Correct, then it would be public hearings.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, I get what you're saying, you're trying to appease because of COVID, a reunion year to go for both classes, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
So two weeks apart, correct? About.
Yeah.
You know, I know we've had i- in the past, and I'm sure, you know, good partner, it's just, we do have the ordinance set up for a reason. If we do approve it, I don't want it to be like a precedent setting that the ordinance changes. Obviously, the ordinance is in place. We've had some multiple complaints within the past year with a couple of events, obviously. We need to be, in my eyes, diligent in making sure we're also listening to all aspects.
Yeah.
You know, that would be my only concern, is just understanding the ordinance is there for a reason. But again, I like that you've shortened it from 12 to 10:30. Makes it a little more manageable. Do we know, uh, you had one last year, correct? An outdoor one that went past 10:30, 11:12?
Might have, but two years ago we didn't, and that's what the makeup's for.
Or was it last year after? Cause I feel like there was one right after LA Jam.
Could have been a graduation one, did it end early though?
Uh, I don't know, it was outside. I just know there was some complaints, so that's my only reservation, is just trying to, again, appease to the people around you and making sure it's not intrusive. That's, that's my only concern, so. I guess I'm, I'm with Kevin, and if he bring it, we can.
Kyle, because you missed a couple of years, you think the party, or the, the crowds will be bigger? Any idea?
I think the crowds will be the same either way.
Good, very good.
You have an understanding of how many people you think would come to there?
I think it was usually around 400.
Yeah.
Because it's on the application.
It has to be on the app, right? Yeah, okay. Well, if, if, for me, just giving direction, I'd say proceed with the applicant, request, application request, coming back. And as long as he can confine himself to the, um, 10:30 timeframe for closing of music and everything else that's required in the application. Counselors, are you accepting that? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, my consensus.
Okay with that direction.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. Item eight. Right? Request for amending ordinance 502.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, in, in 2018, the city council approved the residential, uh, rural, rural residential district RR in response to annexing large portions of St. Joseph Township, which subsequently happened in, um, early 2019. The intent of the rural residential district, um, is to establish and preserve areas within the city for the continuation of agriculture operations, open space, and provide for a very low-density residential development and that rural lifestyle. Kelly, or excuse me, Ken Bellicot and Kristen Farrell, they have submitted a request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow for wedding-focused event, uh, center, um, events as a conditional use in the RR, um, residential district. Uh, they're proposing to build a new event center located just south of Woodlands of Country Manor and southwest of Kennedy Community School. Um, again, it's zoned RR. Um, the city's comprehensive plan does guide for low-density residential, so those would be your single-family homes. However, there are many examples across Minnesota where barns have been converted, um, or new buildings constructed to allow for these type of, um, venues, so it's certainly not heard of. In fact, it's becoming, um, more popular. Uh, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on their request at their last meeting on April 11th. Um, they recommend, um, denial of that amendment to that ordinance. Um, we did receive, um, two, um, public comments, um, at that meeting, so those are included, um, within your, within your packet. Um, staff did, Nate met with the applicants in early January to, to discuss the vision, um, and they discussed options, um, and ultimately they put in the request to amend the ordinance. So before you this evening is a request to approve that ordinance amendment. And then following that, if you did approve it, you would, um, we would ask you that you approve, um, the resolution to, um, for the summary publication. The other option would be if you, you so choose, you could certainly table it until the next meeting, but bear in mind that you would need to make a, um, decision by your next meeting to stay in line with state statute 60-day deadline rule. Uh, the applicants are here this evening. I, I would imagine they would like to speak, and that you may have questions for them this evening.
This is, this is not a public hearing, is it?
It, this is not a public hearing that was held at the planning commission level.
Okay.
And of course, the language isn't included in your packet, it's underlined in red. And so you can see that the, the conditions that were laid out, um, with the use.
My question is, is, do we make a motion and then have a discussion?
Uh, when I'm, you, you probably, we probably should. And, uh, I just want to remind everybody, you, we can make a motion to deny, as the planning commission also did. That's what planning commission knows were, motion to deny the amendment.
You, you are certainly, uh, you certainly can make a motion to deny. You know, typically we ask you to do it in the positive, but you're certainly not prevented from making that motion to deny. You know, Bob, council member, um, Bob may speak to that. I don't know if the motion was actually made in the positive or not.
At the planning, planning commission, we had, uh, Nate, Nate's not here, but we had, uh, represented on parcels that were, would, would, uh, be, uh, all right for this, you know, amendment. You know, after further review, it came down, started out as 52 parcels would be, you know, allowed to have this. And then as it came down to reality after the meeting, it came down to six parcels involved. That would, you know.
Plus there was a seventh, right?
Right, so it's, it's very, very limited areas in the areas in the St., City of St. Joe that would, uh, be allowed to have this, you know, and it comes down to six. You know, I and Mr. Saponiac were dissenting both at the planning commission. You know, it, uh, to me and Mr. Saponiac, it seemed like a good fit of the property that, uh, the, uh, requesters have, you know. I had a chance to go out and look at the property and hear the, see their vision of what was going to belong. And I think it would be very, I, I don't think you'd even know it was there. Unless, you know, if you drove right by it, you wouldn't know it was there, because it's all gonna be into the woods. It's gonna be very low-key, you know, and, uh, you know, it'll fit right into the area, you know, in my opinion.
This was a very interesting, um, application, and, um, I also requested to watch the planning commission, which I did. Um, and, um, I would like the applicants to be able to address us. I want to hear what they have to say. They didn't get to really say a lot at the last planning. I, I think this is important. I think this is important to the community. I think it's important to be able to hear what they have to say. And, um, I have a couple of questions for them also, so if any other council members have, I would like to.
Um, I had, I had the opportunity to go there as well. I don't think it's about the intentions of what your intentions are with the property. I think they're great. I think the biggest concern right now is the rural residential ordinance itself, and where we're at. And on here I see you guys understood that the property you were buying before you bought it was in a rural residential area. And that there would be a lot of who's to jump through to have to change this or amend this. Now, you look at the map that's up there, and I know we have a different one, we have a lot of rural residential in our city. And hearing kind of of what the comprehensive plan, and this is me just in general, is I don't want to jump too far ahead. Again, in, in my eyes, your intentions of what the property are, are amazing, and it would be of value to this city. My concern is, we change this, it opens it up for a lot of other areas, ununique to yours, if that makes sense. That's kind of what my thoughts are right now on the rural residential zoning itself.
So those of you looking at the map, everything in orange is the new zoning district, rural residential. It's actually more land than we have in the old city proper. And that's why changing ordinance is kind of important. I mean, anyway, you want to say something? Nathan, Kevin? Several thoughts. Uh, Mr. Bellicot, Ms. Farrell, thank you for the interest that you're showing in the city of St. Joe to expand a business opportunity. There's a lot going on in our town in terms of people wanting to get involved with what you're doing. And you own a very unique and special place, so congratulations on that. I don't support, and I'll just throw it out there, I don't support us amending the ordinance for this business. And I looked at two areas that I'd like the council to consider in terms of why I don't support it. One is the city annexed the rural area around the central core, farms, people living out in the country. And the residents, the farmers, the people living in the country, did not ask to be annexed. They were annexed. To the city's credit, the city said, hey, we're annexing people that have lived out in the country for generations. What can we do so that they can maintain the lifestyle that they've been accustomed to? And hence, through, I'm sure lots of, I wasn't on the council then, but I'm sure lots of conversation back and forth between the city, the residents, the township, we came up with, the city came up with the rural residential district ordinance that specifically provides for the quality of life, what can be permitted, what can't be permitted, et cetera. So that was only four years ago. And I think for a lot of the residents in that rural area, it's still kind of fresh in their mind that they've been annexed. So. So I think this is just coming too soon in terms of the history of the city, in terms of how soon are we going to, um, change things or allow things that are different from what's in the ordinance? And there are, you know, A through H, different types of things that can occur, you know, of which a wedding venue is not one of them. So that's my first point. The second point is, as a council, I think it's important, you know, the planning commission exists for a reason. And I think it's incumbent upon us to take the recommendation of the planning commission. I'm sure there'll be exceptions from time to time, but the planning commission has dealt with the subject matter, you know, January, February, March, three months up in, you know, April eleven was the third month that they dealt with it. And they gave it a lot of consideration. And they recommended that we don't amend the ordinance. And so I think it would be, uh, a bad pattern to set if we as a council don't follow what the planning commission would recommend. Cause they put a lot of thought into it. This document, I mean, these pages here, not just planning commission, but staff, put a lot of time into reaching out to the county, to the other entities, that if we did amend it, what would be the, uh, what would be the conditional use? So this is a great, uh, opportunity for us as a council to consider whether we should be amending the ordinance this, uh, at this point in time. So I'm not in favor of amending it, and those are the end of my comments.
Um, okay. As, I was township, so I was a part of the annexing over there, so I've experienced that personally. Um, was it fun? No, cause we liked being out in the country. However, the point here was that cities do grow. Cities do, and what they're are wanting, they're not asking. They're asking us to look at it and be able to see how they can fit into that part of our community. I think as a council, we can look at that. You're looking this as a whole. I, again, I was a part of that. Um, I am city now. Um, I actually like what's happening now in my area. However, wasn't fond of it at the time. We have to listen to all avenues and I think that we can be able to look at what can come up. This would be in the front part of it. I love the idea of what they have in the back where this would be no, um, access except for trails to be able to walking areas back there. I think that we should be able to look at the wording and be able to accommodate, as you can see right there in the map. Um, there's not gonna be cars, and that's why I wanted to ask them. Is that the thought process? We're not look, the, the, the parking and that and all that areas in the front area, everything in the back and to the sides is going to stay pretty much while as is. Am I correct in saying that? I want to be able to ask that of them.
Ken Bellicot, property owner at, on Jade Road. So the map that you see above is, um, what I would say is as close to scale as we can possibly get, um, within reason here. So the two brown, um, ovals are the parking areas which would be screened from the road. So there would be gated access for invite, um, only. And the buildings that we have are within setbacks that again, um, allow for screening that are not seen off of the road. And that traffic is diverted rather quickly off of Jade Road into those purposely built areas. The trails that you see mapped out are largely existing. They were created by land, um, landowners and then also hunters that have been there. They would be maintained in a better manner so that we could invite, um, for public viewing, not only the venue space, but also the increased wetland space. The, um, pollinator gardens that would be coming up for educational purposes as well. And then we are in talks with Woodcrest of Country Manor currently on the back space that abuts ninety-four, as you can see on what I'm looking at the far left there. Yep, that space there. About a joint-use facility for the residents of Woodcrest. And then also public use with education within gardening and pollinators and more along those lines of bringing people out to what is akin to some of the most beautiful nature parks that we have in central Minnesota. And keeping that as natural as possible, um, as an additional purpose of the land.
Well, now, my, and so this is what I want to be able to look at is looking at the change. Because obviously, when I was coming into the city, this wasn't a conversation. And this is what I would like to have heard from a council member, from Kevin, is to be able to say, slow this down. I want to be able to slow it down in the sense of looking at the ordination. Uh, I like this. I like this idea. I get it. What you guys are saying is what could possibly move in and that, okay, if you sell it and then it's open to whatever. You know what I mean? But why couldn't we word this to be able to, uh, accommodate businesses? And this is a business, but yet it's a teaching tool. And me, as a grandmother, as a teacher herself, this is something I would love to see coming. And not to mention, we're saying there's going to be houses across the street. What a wonderful addition, not to mention to the school next door. So I don't think we should poo this. I really don't. I think this is something that we need to be able to access and look at this and be able to maybe word it so that businesses can't come in to that extent of being able to, if it was purchased and then something else could come in? I don't know, but that's what happened on my end of the street, okay? And I'm not saying that it's not bad. But I would like to be able to accommodate something like this, especially, um, with what they have. I got to look at it myself, too. I just don't think we should say, no, I don't think we should nay it.
So I don't, I don't think it's about your intentions of what you want to do with the property. I agree with you. This would be great for our community and our city. My only form right now is we're talking about the ordinance. And the ordinance opens up a bigger avenue than just your desires and your dreams and those things. If you can go back to the map, uh, this one, right? And you bring up a good, uh, yeah, nope, this one, sorry.
The selected parcel.
This is the one where we talked about if you amend the ordinance, right? And now you have one, two, three, four, five, six, now, six other properties, right? With that acreage, okay? Um, you're opening it up and now you're, you're talking about to, like, imagine this. You said, your guys' intentions is to sell that property. That's your dream property. What about those one, two, three, four, five, six other opp- opportunities where you amend this ordinance and it opens up to them?
But can we change the ordinance to accommodate?
But again, this is what we're changing it to, is to have a condition of these properties open up. And now if I'm a landowner, and this is just me, again, you gotta play devil's advocate of where you're at. I'm gonna sell that property to a commercial and they can do whatever they want with it. Again, it just.
But can't we look at that with the addendums in that to be able to accommodate?
Yeah, but this is what the addendum is right now.
Right, but I'm just saying, can we look at the rewording of it to be able to accommodate?
But if you approve this now, all of those other properties are open. What I'm trying to say is it's not about your dream. It's great. If it wasn't in this area, yes, build it. But right now, you have to think of all the other avenues and all the other areas of what we're talking about. It's not about your dream. It's not about bringing business in. I agree, it's great. It'll be great for the community. It's about the other areas right now of the rural residential and what the ordinance is saying, right? And where, where we're at in the sense of, you opened it up. We have a comprehensive plan to grow the city in an, in an avenue, in a way of what we need to do throughout the years. One year, two year, three years. So not saying in maybe two or three years, it gets out to your point. And now we can change it for a certain area where it's developed, cause you're, you're farther out in where the development of our, our city is, right? So I'm not, I'm not, I think I told you this before, I'm not against it and I'm not, I'm against it, but I'm not against it. My only concern is it's not about what your wants are there. It's amazing. If we can do it now, it's not in a rural residential area and it's where you can build it, do it. My concern is the rural residential area and the can of worms that opens up even with the condition. Now, I'm not saying you can't look at it again. If it's denied today, you can't look at it again and come back to the table. I believe I posed that question to you as well, right? Of, doesn't mean that if it's approved or not approved, if it's not approved, you can't not come back. Or we can't not look at this again to see how it can work with the property you're at. I'm just saying, with this amendment right here and those other six properties, you're opening up another avenue to those six owners, which, yeah, it's small, but that's a lot of land. And now that you open it up and you amend it to commercial or conditions of you can build a business in those areas, that's a lot of acreage and it doesn't, in my eyes, go with a comprehensive plan of how we want to grow this city.
Sure.
Kevin?
Can we respond or?
Well, maybe. Let's hear what Kevin says first.
Sure.
I'm, I'm just want to get back to the macro, the global picture, the ten thousand foot picture is that this isn't about just one project. Um, one business couple's dream. It's about changing the ordinance for everything that's under the rural residential district. And this isn't the time to do it. It's a great idea. And maybe sometime it could be considered down, you know, down the path, but, um, I think we should follow the planning commission's recommendation. And I don't believe we should be amending the ordinance for the entire rural residential district.
And, and here, you know, here's my thing too with that is, that's what I said, is even if it gets denied tonight, what's to say we can't come back and look at it to see how it can work? Or do more diligent digging? I know, I wish Nate was here because he has a lot of avenue to that, but, yeah. Right.
Did you want to respond?
I did, um, to a few points within there and I'll, I'll try and find some direction. One, I, I don't feel like there's any specific time to set a precedence in change, right? If, if change within a city is warranted, then why not now? And if you have people who are willing to go through the months of time to facilitate that change appropriately and the due diligence, due diligence of staff to facilitate that change in appropriate manner, they have, they have said, staff has done the, the research to say, we would support it as long as it meets these guidelines, which they feel not necessarily restricts future outbursts of wedding venues in Saint Joe. But they fit within the mold of what this could be seen as beneficial to the community. And they have done research to say, outstate Minnesota has set a precedence to use land that is zoned similarly in this manner. I guess the other question would be is, is a bunch of good businesses a bad thing? If it is opened up within that regard, specific to how it affects all of these ordinances, we don't actually deviate far from a definition of a place of worship. And a place of worship is already accessible in conditional use within rural residential. On every single one of those lots over ten acres, everybody there could decide, I want to put up a place of worship. And it's already defined as okay to do so. Within that, if we're operating similarly to a, a facility that's already approved and we have guidelines set forth by staff to say, we would support it if these conditions are followed, then I actually come back and say, why not now? Why not set that precedent now? Because you have a little bit more control of saying, we will do it, we can do it, under the guidance of the direction of our staff. And yes, I wish Nate was here as well. I wish him a speedy recovery. Um, but he's outlined this very well and done the research and provided the research. Flipping over to the planning commission's recommendation. Kevin, did you get a chan, and I don't know if I can directly address you, but, um, did you get a chance to view that meeting?
I did.
Okay.
I watched, I wasn't there, but I.
Sure.
I wasn't there, but I watched the entire meeting.
Okay. We felt as though that their motion to deny actually didn't even deny what we were asking for. In that they were denying something that got derailed into a more of a concert venue or a ballroom hall. Um, the prior Delwyn Ballroom Facility was mentioned. And I believe that that allowed conversation to spin in that direction and not actually look at what we are looking at doing, which is, again, far more akin to a place of worship than it is a concert venue.
Then, Mr. Bellicot, with all due respect, we've gone from, I came to a meeting tonight talking about changing the ordinance of the rural residential district to allow a wedding venue. And you've been talking pollinators. And we're gonna have people from Woodcrest come up and we're gonna connect with the school. And now you're talking a house of worship. So I'm, I'm just not connecting the dots. A wedding venue is, we're gonna have a big party. This is a couple that don't want to get married in a church. They want to get married in a barn. And it's gonna attract hundreds of people. There's going to be music in the warm climates. And I didn't really want to get into the specifics of this project. I thought we could look at the macro. But now we're getting into the specifics of this project. And I just think now you're starting to talk house of worship and I think you better go back to the drawing board.
I think personally, we need to get back to what it's about, which is the rural residential. I, I go back to what I was saying before. It's not about your intentions of what you want to do. They're great. They're grand. But it's, has nothing to do with the business that you want there. It has to do with the rural residential. And now, the conditions are up here. I see those, right? Of how you want to amend it. My only question, and maybe you could answer this, Teresh or someone else, is the city may place stricter restrictions on the use depending on the unique circumstances and parcels or features, number eight. What does that mean?
Yeah, so let's just assume that the council does, um, approve this amendment to allow conditional use. The next step for the applicants would be to apply for conditional use, so that's a type, type of permitted use. So first of all, the minimum, whatever you, if you proved all these conditions, they would have to meet all these conditions. But if you find that they need additional, um, conditions, like hours of operations, you would spell that out in the CUP. If you say, you know what, you need to be done with your events by ten thirty. Um, you, you could attach that to that CUP, which goes with the property.
So this is approved, do they have to register every event that's gonna be on that?
They would not have to register every event.
Okay.
It would, I would argue, you would have to be a reasonable condition.
Right.
The, the, the term conditional use applies to the property. You talk about the other five, we open all up. And if they'd apply for it under, if we'd pass this amendment, they would have to go through a conditional use process, which at the council table, you would, uh, apply those conditional uses depending upon the property that's being questioned. You know, hours of operation, whether you need trees or fences or roads or security, all that good stuff. You know, that's, that's the uniqueness of a conditional use permit. It's property specific and project specific, depending upon what they bring in there. So just passing the amendment allows, under that ordinance, to have a venue center. We just don't have any language to apply to a venue center.
Well, can't there be language added to that?
What's that?
Can't there be language added to that?
Not to mention that this.
I'm all for, when I'm saying, what you're saying, can that be added to the ordinance?
Oh, yes. There's all kinds of, this is just to get it on the books, that it's allowed under a conditional use permit. That's a whole different, uh, tool to deal with the unknowns.
Just because we pass this doesn't mean that they're still not gonna have to come to us to be able to clarify things that they need to do on that property, like any other zones that we would be opening up there. And we have said as a council that this city is growing and all of a sudden we want to kibosh the growth? I, I have a hard time with this conversation. I, I have a hard time with this conversation in that sense because we're putting a community center in right in our backyard here. We are going to be growing here and I think this is not saying that they're gonna go willy nilly. We are saying that we are still gonna have control here, we're just asking to amend so that they can move forward. And be able to partner with us in this process.
Right, they can apply for the permit and then they'll come to us and if we don't agree with, if they can't produce what we think they should have.
So I don't.
And it's a no go.
So I don't think that we're disagreeing with you, that we're trying to stop your process. I think the thing at hand is, cause I said, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with this, but. There's an avenue of how your comprehensive plan has to go. Do we have, where's, where's the other one? I know, just wait, I'm trying to find it, sorry. Um, sewer and water out there, is it out there?
No, there's no sewer and water.
How mu- how long would that take to get that out there?
Well, that would be up to them.
But you're looking back at this city plan of, if it's not out here, is it here, is it here? You know what I'm saying, like.
You're lumping these people in this zone with the rest of the zones.
Hey, one at a time, stay clearly, let one finish and then the next one take off. I haven't even spoke yet, so, let's, let's bring this some, and I will, but let's bring you guys to conclusion first.
Okay, well, my only conclusion is, we're building out to the city, sewer and water has to get out there. So, how long does that take, right? That's, those are my big questions, right, rural residential, how you go, you know, I look at you as. How far does it go out if this is a condition? It's also gonna limit you on your business of what you're doing and when you wanna open it as well too.
I believe they have already talked to the engineer on this, no?
We, we haven't got that far into the details, at least relative to a, to a site plan and, and so, I, I think to answer the counselor's question. Much like the utilities that have been extended elsewhere in that area, whether it's Kennedy, Country Manor. Um, that whole part of town has been a continuation of a phased approach to utility extension. Utilities to serve this site, I would anticipate one construction season and it would be a, a phased approach depending on how much of that site. Alter- ultimately is developed. The site plan that was on the screen showed the, the structures and the buildings more in the, I'll, I'll call it in this case, the northeast corner. Utilities could be relatively easily extended to that northeast corner. If properties further west, uh, or portions of that property further west were to develop. That will be an, another circumstance in terms of additional infrastructure, but to get to where the brown uh, areas are. Uh, that would be relatively uh, short and, and easy to extend utilities to.
Would that, would the city be responsible for that or that?
Typically, the development is what drives uh, the, the extension of the utilities.
My turn. So, we did meet and I said, there's a, there's, there's a couple ways to make this work. Number one, you don't have to put any restrictions on a new use in RR. And I find the restrictions in this way too limiting. If I have thirty-nine acres, I can't build a special event center. And that's way more than I need. If I have ten acres, I could build a special event center, but I couldn't based on this. And if I wanna build it out on county two, I can't afford water way out there. The city would have to supply water and we can't afford that. So these are way too restrictive. You can do a special events facility and then in the CUP restrict. Just like you'd restrict places of worship, facilities of retail. Or, and in fact, what you're doing is rezoning it, you're rezoning it from multifamily residential to B two, commercial. Or you could spot zone it, you could make that parcel B two with residential all around it. There are many ways to skin this cat, but I find what they've added for this use is way too restrictive. And it affects not only those six acres, but anything under forty acres that you could put a special event center on. And that holds business back. You want it to be as flexible as possible so that each use of each building can be especially, or have a condition use permit to their specific needs. Not this size for this event and that land. And that's my opinion. And we had that discussion, I'm pretty sure, didn't we? No, I think, again, I think that's too restrictive, I mean, if you wanna build it on three-twentieth, I don't know how you're gonna get water out there for a new building. I mean, you're gonna expect the developer to put a mile of water and sewer in, that's really restrictive.
I don't know what the financial, the, the, the balance is, whether you can supply the water and sewer yourself. Or if you have to hook up or have a act, added cost of, you know, bringing the pipe out to you.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, we don't know what that means right now. We're saying you have to have water and sewer, but we don't really know what that means, is that the city paying for it or the developer paying for it? And if it goes way out on county two and blah blah, that's four million dollars. Who's gonna build out there for four million dollars for a hookup unless the city pays for it? And if the city has to pay for it, we can't afford that. There's just, you know, that's not rea- reasonable.
One of the biggest concerns at the planning commission level was the uh, water for the fire suppression.
Yeah, and they'd have to find some kind of.
Then again, we have an engineer on the planning commission, but there are ways of. Adequately supplying water for fire suppression to build, meet the state building codes, so. You know.
So my question staff and like.
So it could be one way or the other, but you gotta work all the.
Kelly's got the floor now.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
Um, I, I'm, I'm bumming that Nate isn't here, um, but hopefully one of you will be able to assist. Um, so if this doesn't pass. What would this couple steps next, what would their next step be? What, how, would they still be able to process as you're saying, so they can still process and build out there?
Well, I think the, my recommendation was I go back to Nate and say, this failed, what language do you, can we just add special events? And then add a condition use permit and bring that back to the planning commission for another public hearing. And then that would come to the council, or do you wanna rezone it to B two, commercial and then follow the ordinances in B two, which would make special event center okay? I said, those are the two, two kinda options they have. I'm not crazy about spot zoning like that because it's residential, residential, commercial, residential, so. I'm not crazy about that, but in effect, the condition use permit on, in our, our district is rezoning. In effect, it follows the condition use permit, which would follow some kinda commercial use. So, those are kinda the options. He either, they either petition for a, a zoning ordinance to B two and or. We change this language in R to say you can build a special event center. You need a condition use permit and then we dictate the terms of that specific use to that center. Not the land, but the use that's going in. That, my recommendation.
And, well, no, and I, and I don't hate that either, like again, I'm not trying to go after you and your business, your opportunities in the plan. Like I told you guys from step one, it's about changing a whole. Zone of what we're doing and is, a, a big zone at that, right, and even if it's the six, so. It's, which is why I posed the question, this doesn't go, what's the next step? How do we, how do we get the vision to happen through the correct way?
I mean, every one of these uses, pardon me, I didn't mean to interrupt, any one of these uses, bed and breakfast in. Government administration, home extended businesses would have to go through a condition use permit for that use. They'd all have to go through that, that permitting process. So, I'm not sure why we're adding a bunch of restrictions for a special event center. When we know how we're gonna have to come back and go through a condition use permit, so that any use. Could be, I mean, again, I'm not sure, I think I had this talk with Therese, what are the uses can we put in RR? That would have to go through a condition use permit and move on. Anyway, so, right now I'm opposed as it, as it sits and I think Therese knows and I, I kinda. And I think, again, next steps are go back to Nate and say, this failed, can we add this and go through the CUP process and or rezone process? Sure, Ken?
I don't wanna speak for Nate, but we play devil's advocate together all of the time. And I would like to actually pose this to staff if, if this was correct in his saying. The initial, the first motion could be approved. And then the second motion within there for all of the additional restrictions. Could be discussed or declined and tabled for later. In effect, doing exactly what you're asking for mayor is allowing that next discussion to happen. But not delaying that process by whatever additional application timeframe there is. Is, is that a correct interpretation of what Nate represented?
Uh, mayor and council, I would respond to that, I would recommend at that point if, you know, from what, you know, Rick has shared. In regards to the special use, if there was a direction and consensus from council to allow it as a special use, but. Um, adjust the conditions, then I would recommend that you table this evening. And lay those out if you think it's too restrictive to give um, staff du- um, guidance on that. I would not recommend approving and then discussing later. Cause you're, you're, you're proving what's in the packet, so I, I would, I would say at that point, just table the item until your next meeting and give staff direction.
Move to table this whole discussion until staff can uh, put it on paper. What the next step should be to go forward with this situation. Very clear, right?
As clear as you normally are, that's okay. Anyone? Yeah, hearing no second, that motion is denied.
I don't know, Therese, I mean, the idea of tabling it, when you said at the beginning of this. We've got like sixty days, we got a drop dead date of May seventeenth. I think we should entertain a motion to. Approve the amendment and we go yay or nay on it. And then people have to pick up either bootstraps and.
And depending on how it falls, then you go back to understanding where it needs to go.
I'm not making that motion, I'm just talking about, that's where I think, I don't think tabling it is okay. Cause you said that by state statute, this has to be figured out by, what was it, May seventeenth, sixty days from when it came in?
So that's the question.
I think we should vote it up or down tonight.
So if, if we, if we table it, has, it has to be done by May seventeenth, correct?
That is correct, unless the applicants um, submit a letter extending the review in writing.
So, I will, I'll entertain any motion at this point.
I'll move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two zero zero five, amending ordinance five oh two, section five oh two four and five oh two twenty-seven. I'm moving to approve motion one.
Second?
Motion and second, ordinance twenty twenty-two oh five, amending ordinance five oh two. Further discussion or questions?
So, depending on how this falls yay or nay, right? You know, my, my, my question to you is, it's, it's a great idea, how do we get it done? That's the next step in, in, in my.
That's my. So you know, we just offer that will extend that timeframe through written. I mean, there, there's no reason that this should drop dead within two weeks if there's warranted more discussions, so.
The, the motion to table, um, failed. Motion and second on the ordinance amendment. Ask the question, all those in favor signify by aye? All those opposed? Motion fails. Motion still fails, three, two.
So the vote come out to?
Three, two.
Four?
Deny. Not approved. So I would, I would again, tell staff and you two to get back with Nate when he's available or Therese. And next steps with, with a B two, change the language. Let everybody who wants to build an event center, build an event center, I don't care. And then go through a condition use permit process. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, item nine. Sorry, Ryan. Item nine. I know I'm not item nine, who's item nine?
Yeah, I can, I can uh, give you an overview. So, uh, you had discussed this at your last wo- work session last week in regards to um, hiring an administrative assistant. To serve um, the front window with walk-in traffic, um, routing calls, issuing permits and licenses. Um, over the counter and then assisting um, all the departments with administrative work. Currently, our account technician, um, Vicky Granite does that. So she's not only doing accounts receivable and, and, and a number of finance duties under, under Lori, um, but she's also doing that. Serves at that front desk receptionist, um, which is um, quite a bit of work, lots of interruptions and so forth. So, um, we are asking staff is uh, uh, approval to hire a full-time administrative staff assistant, excuse me. Um, because we, we have identified that the need currently exists. And it's gonna get even more of, uh, be more of a need, um, as we transition to our cellular meter um, reads. Um, as well as um, the proposed new uh, finance and, and permitting software. Um, so with that, we are asking for approval um, of the administrative assistant job description, which is in your packet. And then authorize staff to conduct the hiring process for the full-time administrative assistant. Um, we would need to have um, Flattery and Hood, our labor attorney, um, um, review the job description and, and, and grade it. But we are anticipating that that would be a grade five, um, which the range is currently is eighteen ninety-one per hour to twenty-seven. Twenty-five per hour.
I move to approve the administrative assistant's job.
My second.
Motion and second, approving the administrative assistant job description and hiring process. Further questions or concerns?
A couple things. Moderate supervision of the city clerk, what does moderate supervision, who will this person report to and what does moderate supervision mean?
They would actually uh, report to our city clerk, Kayla Klein. Um, moderate means it's, certainly there's gonna be oversight, but they're gonna be able to have independent work. Um, you know, we certainly, most of the positions here, a lot of them are moderate supervision, everybody does their task indep- independently. Um, knows their job, we certainly work as a team, there's certainly oversight, we're doing um, continual one-on-one. Um, meetings with that supervisor as well as team meetings as well, so I hope that answers your question.
And then, there's something about being the face of the city. That when someone comes in and they look at someone behind that window and Vicky does an awesome job of being the face of the city. And so does Candy in that respect in the police department. So, my expectation is, there would be that, in addition to all these other qualifications. There would need to be someone that has that type of demeanor, personality for that meet and greet. And then, we're taking the money to fund this out of general budget, it's not coming from ARPA or any other place? That's all I had.
Other question? I have a, I have a couple. Um, we're doing this ahead of. Job classification, compensation update, approved, third to perform compensation, which includes job classification. We didn't get ahead of that without, which means it could change based on that. In other words, Flair and who could get their thing done and say, oh, it should be down here somewhere?
Uh, we are asking to move forward with this, that is correct, but yes, as part of the compensation proposal, they would be reviewing all the jobs in respects to. Um, their duties, but also in, in accordance with the, the market.
Would it mean that?
Um, so could it adj- could it, the, the rate adjust, yes, and so could the other positions within the city?
Would the job description potentially change based on what come, what Flair and Hood?
The job description would not change.
Uh, number two, Kayla is not a manager at this point, will she need people skills and training? Will she do, will she do the performance?
We, we would give her um, the training that she needs absolutely, but she does um, oversee our election judges, granted they are volunteer, but she does. Um, manage that process as well as our video person, um, two of those.
The HR process of performance reviews is quite a bit different than volunteers coming in to do election stuff.
Fair, fair statement.
I'm just saying, this is another step in Kayla's that we wanna make sure she's comfortable with and can train for and has the right skillset to do it. We don't wanna set her up to fail. So, that should be included somewhere in, is there a training budget you guys have or something?
Yes.
Okay, so that should be included as well. Um, that's all I got. Any other questions or concerns? Motion and second to uh accept this job description and whatever it's at pay grade. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Carry, oh, fails? Four, one, motion prevails. Good. Ten, Mr. Saber. Nothing tonight? Okay, thank you.
You got a couple of meetings, but you're not that lucky, right?
Come on, dude.
Good evening, um, put a screen, my screen up here, share my screen. Last Thursday, we uh opened bids for the twenty twenty-two street improvements. Uh, so the city received uh three bids from uh Aztec, uh Minnesota Midwest paving and Knife River. Scroll down to the bottom here. The other part that I uh more so want to describe or discuss with the council is, is this section here described as alternate A Seventeenth Avenue. So uh first maybe to the bid amounts. Uh, the low bid uh between the base bid and the alternate was Aztec at six hundred thirty thousand eight hundred fourteen. Uh, you'll notice uh at least in the orientation that we have uh very close pricing between the first low bidder and the second low bidder, and actually the second low bidder at six hundred twenty-nine thousand. You might say is, well, that's, that's lower, it's in the second column. Uh, the nuance here is that the low bidder will be determined whether or not the council awards the base bid plus the alternate. So that's going to decide uh who the low bidder is, we've got about fifteen hundred dollars between the two. So you might say, what's, what's alternate A or what's the alternate? So if you recall at the um public improvement hearing, uh we had discussion about drainage conditions at the south end of, of Seventeenth Avenue. Uh, staff were directed to collect some survey information and come up with an alternate that would um improve the drainage conditions at that south end. So alternate A uh was a breakout, if you would, or a separate cost uh to address the drainage concerns. I've, I've orientated this with, with north pointing up so that you're right with the world. But uh what alternate A involves would be the extension of, of two drain tiles, uh one on each side of the road. The black squares are, are inlets or what we would, essentially a catch basin, only a smaller version. As you recall from my, my description during the public improvement hearing and, and subsequent, this isn't a reconstruction project, we're not fully reconstructing the street, we're not adding curb and gutter. Uh, this is an overlay, essentially an overlay project. And so we looked for an alternative that didn't disrupt uh the street structure. We weren't digging into the street, in this case, we're digging into the boulevard to install these drains. The cost to doing that, uh depending on which bidder uh prevails, would be between thirty-six thousand and forty-one thousand dollars to install those drains. So uh the, the direction that we ultimately need from staff, one, if the council is interested in proceeding with that improvement, the next step we have to determine is what should that cost share, uh if any, be borne by the benefiting properties? Because to this point, we've talked about the resurfacing costs, but we haven't talked about uh the potential drainage improvement costs. And that's a detail that we'll need to sort out before conducting our special assessment hearing, uh which tentatively would be at your first meeting in June. So between now and that time, one of the things that's, we would recommend or what would likely have to happen if staff, if the council wanted to see this work proceed, would be to re-engage the city's appraiser to ask the question of what in, what increase in benefit uh to those parties uh would be incurred if you proceeded with that improvement, because that would affect what you would ultimately uh potentially special assess, at least for that south end of Seventeenth Avenue. So it's a little bit of a incremental step here, first was what was the improvement? Second, what would the cost of the improvement be? Now the real, the next step is what would be the, the share of those property owners if, if you proceeded?
Does it go just to the four residents that we talked about there?
E- e- essentially, the, the change in grade in the road occurs really about the north property line here. So I don't, does my cursor show up on your screen?
Yeah.
So from this point south is what drains to the south.
Okay.
Um, and so really, we would have a difficult time saying any of those lots to the north of that would benefit because the drainage north of that lot line uh flows north.
What is the ask? The ask is to go back to find?
Well, the ask would be, is, is this, is this an improvement that the council is interested in, in pursuing?
We had a question on that, going back to the bids. So if we don't pursue it, that changes the bidding process?
No, no, so the bidding process is, is, is all intact. It's really who you're going to award the contract. So in, for example, in the case of awarding the base bid and the alternate, this bidder, the second bidder would be the low bidder, because the total of the base bid and the alternate is the lowest bid. If the council said we would only get to award the base bid, not do the alternate.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I just want to clarify, so what you're saying, the thirty-six would be pretty much will put on the residents, correct?
Or some, some portion of that.
Okay, okay.
Some portion.
I thought the alternate was, the base bid was including the alternate.
Just going to clarify.
They're, they're mutually exclusive, the base bid is the paving work that we've reviewed previously.
Followed.
The alternate is just the drainage improvement.
And that thirty-six would be to the, just the four, you're saying not the whole street?
Correct.
Okay.
Some sort of cost or deciding.
Some portion of that depending, and that's why I mentioned the, the special benefit analysis and the appraiser. They would determine what's the maximum benefit uh that you, that we could assess or the city could assess of that thirty-six thousand.
Well then, is it possible to bring those four residents in then? And be able to let them know their, that, that's what they're going to be getting into?
Well, that would ultimately be mailed out, uh it's not so much a negotiation, but if the council decided to proceed, we, the city engages the appraiser, and let's say that benefit is determined to be eight thousand dollars. That's what your assessment would reflect, that's the mailed notices, and that's what we present at the assessment hearing.
That's the purpose of having the appraiser to get a, you know, a non-biased opinion on what that benefit may be.
Maximum benefit amount is.
But I think that's the reason why they were requesting of the city, if I'm not mistaken, go back a little, um, to be able to say because of the potholes and everything that was happening. And I think they were looking at the whole street was because of the prior um engine of what had happened there. So I, I'm, I'm thinking that, is it on us to be able to, I mean, I think it, they're the ones that came forward, they're the ones that requested that survey, we okayed that. Um, and so it would be up to them then, if they wanted to eat that cost of, what you're saying, eight thousand, am I hearing?
I, 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 I threw that out figuratively.
Approximately.
No, the system process is the city eats a portion of the cost.
Right, I know.
Eat the rest.
But what you're saying.
But this is an extra, the draining is what he said.
And if we add it in, if we order it in, then we're going to assess it all at once. It's not piecemeal.
But you're saying too, you could have a direction of the city could pay for all of that too, correct?
That's, that's in the spectrum of your options.
Trying to get my basis of what I'm trying to hear. Because from what, what Kelly's saying here is that that happened due to a botched engineering problem prior, right? I'm not saying botched.
That, that, that hurt.
Sorry.
Even though I wasn't there.
But what I'm saying is now, and, and again, if those four residents came because that's what they were saying and they want it corrected, I see what you're saying, but.
Right.
And, and that's, that's the challenge here, is as I mentioned at the start of this, this was not a reconstruction project.
Right.
So you are not reconstructing the street to add curb and gutter, you are not reconstructing the street to add storm sewer. Uh, if we were to look at, and, and the closest example would be go one block over to Sixteenth Avenue. And when that converted from a rural section to an urban section with curb and gutter and storm sewer, and that was, you know, it was comprehensive. This is a project that's twenty years into its life cycle and not ready for reconstruction.
But you said um curb and gutter probably wouldn't even be looked at, plus a whole new street to that for another.
At this stage, yes.
For another how long though? Twenty years, approximately?
Fifteen years, fifteen to twenty years?
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I'm leaning towards the idea of getting an appraiser and let's look at alternative A. But the other question I want to ask is, the four properties we're talking about, Councilor Beannick, you live in, you, you live on one of those four.
I do.
Yes. So at what point in a counselor discussion, talking about city governance, when you're actually living there, one of the four affected properties? I don't know enough about city governance to know when you would recuse yourself from getting too personal with this stuff.
I disagree because my husband lives there too, and that's why he came to the meeting is so that I could step back on that. And so that's why I'm asking is that the, you know, if we're going to publicly send it to them, then there's other, three other um houses involved. So I try to, as not so much including, I still should be able to vote on it. It's just that I want to make sure all the residents that are a part of it is knowing this. And so if that's going to be mailed out, then that's what I'm looking for. Because then my husband will know.
It just sounded to me like you were just advocating your own personal position with respect to this.
How?
It just, excuse me, it just sounded that way.
I was just saying, I'm asking how, I'm asking ev- everybody involved to know, that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying no to this, I'm saying knowledge has to be brought to the ones that are going to pay the bill.
And I think this should move forward with the concept of looking at the alternative and get the appraiser and.
And I agree.
So our goal would be to reach out to, to, to the appraiser, see if we can get that opinion before your next meeting, uh so that we can present what's the impact to special assessment. So that's really our next step, because the next action of the council is to declare the cost to be assessed, schedule the special assessment hearing. So um we need to act expeditiously in, in, in terms of trying to get that information for you. So tonight, this was informational, we're not looking to award the contract. I wanted to canvass the bids with the council and then get direction relative to, to alternate A.
Very good, thanks Randy. Uh, ten eight, Tiff. Oh, sorry, tax will be, my Tiff, your tax. Anybody?
So we received an application from um Trobix Bussing to um rescind the original two thousand nineteen abatement agreement and entertain a new agreement. Um, their project was delayed a couple of years. Um, the original agreement, as I said, was assigned, um approved for a seven-year abatement at um with seventy-five percent of the taxes abated each year, um with the city and the school district participating in that abatement. Um, with their delay in their project, they will not get the gap that they need to cover in order to move forward with the project. So they are recommending that they would like to rescind that agreement and move forward with a new agreement. Um, they are asking for a higher abatement um level, and we'll go through that a little bit more detailed at that time when we, we have, when we'll have a hearing on that. Um, but for right now, um we've had our, our bond counsel and our financial advisor with Northland Security and Taft review the um, the application. And there's two different terms that we are proposing. One is a seven-year where a hundred percent of the abatement would be um would be abated, um but completed in seven years. If we go back to that seventy-five percent of the taxes abated with the new ask, we're looking at a ten-year abatement agreement. And so for right now, um the school district has their hearing before the city will have their hearing. We're trying to set what those terms would be, we want to be on the same term agreement as the school district. I think the reason that it was set at seven years and seventy-five percent of the taxes abated back in two thousand nineteen is for the city to collect a little bit of the taxes early on. Um, I did the schedule where the middle column shows how much taxes the city and the school district would get to retain during the life of, the estimate life of that uh abatement. It was about eighteen thousand a year. Now, if we do that over the ten years, you're looking at about twenty-four thousand over the years that the city would, would get to retain. Um, however, it's going to take us longer to get to that abatement period. Um, just kind of as a reminder, from when we go through the taxes, about fifty thousand dollars um fluctuates the tax rate about one percent a year. So if we collected twenty-four thousand, you, maybe half a percent of what that impact, that tax collection would be. If we paid off quicker in full, it allows us oper- uh future opportunities that, first of all, we, we get to that full tax capacity or that tax, the real tax realization on that property quicker. But it also allows us some other um funding opportunities. Um, and one instance that's coming up soon, this won't, this parcel won't be included in this discussion, but when we do the community center bonds, we will look at parcels with higher taxes on there because we have to earmark them towards that bond, even though we're using local, local option sales tax and pledge taxes for that, or the, the pledge um fundraising um pieces to that. We still have to identify properties that can back up that bond. So um like I said, the community center will, will come long before either one of those terms is up for the, the Trobix, but in the future, we don't know what will come up. So if we can finish that abatement agreement earlier than later, it just affords us other opportunities at some point in the future that may arise. So staff is just looking for um your feedback, whether you would be leaning towards a seven-year or a ten-year. As I said, the merits of the abatement, we'll, we will have a public hearing and go through that, that process. Just kind of wanted to get the feedback on the terms from the council.
So your, your recommendation is shorter? You would say seven, not ten, in your.
I could go both ways, but I think it, it makes sense to do seven and not tie up those taxes for a longer term. But I could argue either way.
Who, who remembers, how did we talk the, the school district into seven years? We had like four meetings with them across several months.
They agreed to it, I think, to be on the same term as the city.
Yeah, that's why I say, if we go ten years, will this, will the district consent to agree?
They indicated that um a couple of years ago, they might have been hesitant to go a longer term.
Yeah.
But now that we have, um, they, they're a partner with us on Woodcrest.
Okay.
And that term is kind of closer to the same term, so then they were, they were okay to entertain a longer term.
I do remember.
Their preference is still seven years, but they, they would entertain ten.
Well, and I, I do remember that they wanted to match us whatever it was, but I just, I'm hesitant to show them ten years, ten years and get it done, that's.
Sounded like their preference would be seven, but they would, they would go along with ten if that's
Okay.
what the decision was.
Okay.
Is there some urgency here? Why did this get on the agenda so last minute? Because that's usually not our protocol.
Our construction period for Trobix is, while their construction is being held up, they did close on the property, so they can't do anything until we have this in place. Um, and the reason why we brought it to you tonight is because the school district's public hearing will become, come before the city councils, and they need to understand what the terms are before they have their public hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, is that six seventy, six seventy-six represent the official gap?
Yeah, like if you, if you add the school district and the city together, that's the, the gap that they're asking for. And the gap is coming in from increase in construction costs, they want to pave their, their parking, which was not in the original application.
It's almost a million dollars.
I think they're adding one of the buildings that they were going to phase out later, I think they're going, moving forward with it right away.
Oh, the mechanic side of it?
I think there was a piece of it, I don't remember which part, but um, so.
But that's, those are good numbers?
They are.
As far as their gap to be, that's what it is?
That is their application for their gap.
Okay.
So you're looking for a motion, yes?
Motion or what?
A motion.
Just move forward?
Just on what term you would want, the seven or ten years, and then we'll, the merit of the abatement we'll have in the public hearing.
Uh, I move for the seven-year, hundred percent tax abatement beginning twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-nine.
I second.
Motion and second, uh twenty twenty-two agreement, seven-year. Further discussion?
I'd prefer the ten-year because uh I like the cash flow of some taxes coming in.
Yeah, and I'm surprised that, you know, the, the, the terms of difference between seven seventy-five and hundred seventy, you know, ten seventy-five is the difference in what the district, um, agreed to last time. That's why I'm, you think they'll do seven year? Wow. I'm surprised by that, but, yeah, I don't disagree with Bob. That's one of the reasons we went with seven, or with the seventy-five percent last time, so we could see some revenue along the way. Um, if we went, and I know you're not recommending, if we went ten-year, would, how do you think the district would react? You know?
They seem like they would support it still.
Okay.
Their preference was seven, but they would support ten.
Okay. Okay, motion and second, seven-year, hundred percent. Other questions or concern? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion prevails, three, two. Eleven. Uh, what commissioner board reports did we have since last time? Are, EDA? No, we had the EDA. Are the, no, I don't think so. That was second, so.
I thought it was, yeah, the second.
Oh. I don't have that next week.
Okay. And CBB was over and-
Not until next week. CBB's next week.
Okay. We're good. Okay. Uh, mayor report, so I got a couple of things I wanna go through. So, um, I've reached out to our legislators and senators, and, uh, they're gonna be attending either a pre-city council meeting to meet with us and/or a council session, and that's the four from, or two from thirteen, thirteen A, and two from fourteen, fourteen A. I haven't reached out to those running right now, but it's current legislators that represent us today. Just, again, go over our projects, meet them, greet them, ask questions. Um, so I give, uh, I, I talked to the San Joe Chamber on May twelfth. Uh, Dwight, you and I have a meeting this Wednesday? Okay. With, that's with CSB. It's the final month, so, right, graduation seven, eight? Graduation, CSB, yes, you graduate this weekend? Okay. And, uh, that's all I got. Questions? Concerns? Okay. Item thirteen.
So moved.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, so maybe it's pretty cheap.